So, welcome Crystal, our principal from Forestale Elementary School is going to present to us tonight.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Looking around the room, I know most folks, but I will provide a formal introduction. My name is Crystal Sessins-Wiggins. I am the principal at JV Forestale Elementary School. And tonight, I'm excited to be here to share with you an update on our school year thus far. We are only in November, so some of the things that I'm going to share is just things that we're looking forward to, that you can expect, that we're excited about, and things that just highlight how our areas of the strategic plan, our district mission and vision and goals come to life day to day in our school building. On this slide here, I wanted to just capture the one thing that really makes me excited about the start to the school year. And one event that I always look forward to is the Spirit of Beacon Day. I think it's a great way as a district that we start the school year off because all of the schools participate. I know the board marches and for Forestale, it's become like a really cool thing that the parents and students really look forward to. Even my own family, we look forward to it and to the point where my two boys, if they see a red shirt or the letters J V F, they chant. They're like, J V F, even like randomly on like today, whatever. So it's a nice thing that I love to highlight and celebrate and I really look forward to for our school year. So when preparing this presentation, I decided to cover the areas of our strategic plan as well as Board of Education goals and district mission and vision. Each slide has a list of examples with some bullet points, some of which we'll all spend a little bit more time highlighting and speak to in more detail to give you some insight on what that looks like. So first, starting off around the statement, diversity is our strength. I really wanted to highlight the work connected to equity and culture of care. And the first thing that comes to mind is how we start the year off and how teachers start their day with students, but really just building classroom community, the work that teachers have put in around responsive classroom. It really allows for students to connect with one another, to celebrate each other, to celebrate likes and, you know, passions and acknowledge things maybe that they don't like. They get to know each other. They really are building a family and fostering positive behavior in classroom community. It's been helpful in supporting teachers in this area is to have the role of our district S E L T O S A, Ms. Dina Morrow, who has been a great support for teachers. She comes in and meets with them. She meets with students. She provides modeling around different energizers and meats and greets and shares that you can use as aligned to responsive classroom. And that's something that I think is huge because you can tell and see the difference when you start the year this way and students begin to connect with one another and form friendships. Next is our equity team. And one thing that's new this year, I worked with our equity team to designate a space in our school that we're referring to as J V F mirrors and windows. You'll see a snippet of that on the next slide. But this is a space that's designated for us to continually celebrate and affirm our student, staff, and school community through affirmations and representation. To start the year in this space, our second grade students were highlighted. Their work was displayed, pictures of themselves, and they chose to include things that captured who they are as individuals, parts of their home life and their culture, things that they're excited about, things that they don't like or like about school. And we highlighted this and opened up the opportunity for displays throughout the year to rotate. If students, teachers have ideas of things that they would like to place in this area, then we're going to do that. So again, we started the year off with that and we're going to transition soon to connect with the work our equity team did in October around AAC awareness. AAC stands for Augmentative Alternative Communication Device. And that is a tool that students who are either nonverbal or have limited speaking abilities use. It's equivalent to their voice. They carry it wherever they go. And we have several students in our building who use this device. And one of the things that our equity team did was work with one of our classroom teachers. They did a school-wide read aloud and then they did a school-wide activity where every student in our building, K-2, they did it paper pencil and then 3-5 had an electronic version, but they had a printout of what a student using an AAC device would see if they were making a choice on their favorite snack. So as a school, we did a school-wide poll on a snack survey. And students who have the AAC devices, they indicated their snack choice on there. Everyone else participated in the poll either electronically or on the paper form. And then we did an announcement about it and that's going to be the next display in the J V F windows and mirrors area. So that was pretty exciting. That was something that was new. And honestly, a lot of parents were asking about it because we do have a group of parents who are really passionate about raising awareness, helping their students to connect with other kids using their device in that aspect. And we saw that happen through this initiative. So I was really glad to see the equity team work with some of the other teachers to do that. Some of the areas, other areas highlighted here include continued education and curriculum that is reflective of diverse perspectives and experiences. I believe that as I'll continue to like talk about these slides and go over the other areas of the strategic plan, there's going to be overlap, which I think is wonderful because that means as a district, things are aligned. There should be overlap. So when I'm talking about equity and culture of care, I'm going to make reference to curriculum. I'm going to make reference to academic excellence and I'm going to talk about those things a little bit more. But I wanted to share that this was important because it does align directly to diversity. It's important that that's reflected in our curriculum. And some examples include a recent conversation that was being had in our fifth grade class where they were studying the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Also, our K-2 Ready Math Curriculum, which is new, I'm going to speak to that. But some examples of what really stands out in that curriculum for me, and also this was confirmed by teachers and feedback that we received from parents, is that that curriculum comes with informational family pages to help support the students and families when they are reviewing this stuff at home. Word problems that tie in diverse cultures and reference different countries. For an example, there was a second grade math problem and it started off and it read, Samir makes Moroccan tiles with his grandpa. And then it goes on to give some of the math connection. But for me, I remember when I was a, you know, an elementary student, I don't remember hearing and seeing names like that in our math curriculum. So I think that alone speaks volumes, using names that resonate with various ethnicities. And even this particular curriculum incorporates stories such as nonfiction stories where they reviewed Eugene Clark, who was or highlighted Eugene Clark, Japanese-American who studied ocean life, grew up in New York City, was raised by her mom, and was the only Japanese-American in her school. And then while reviewing this story, it tied in the second grade math practice that they were focusing on. And students made connections to both that literacy aspect and the kind of social studies learning there as well as their math learning. This is, I'm going to try to play this just so you can kind of see a little bit of what that space looks like. So that's the J V F windows, mirrors and windows area. So that's a display that was just up recently with the second graders and their work being highlighted. The little strips of papers had sentences on it about what they love, who they are, what represents them. And then those things were coupled with this in the top photo here, you see a morning meeting, a responsive classroom style, and a book that was read as a group titled Our Class is a Family. All right. Academic excellence and high quality curriculum. These are two areas of our strategic plan and they encompass how we're increasing student engagement and rigor as well as how we're innovative in our instructional practices, how we're amplifying student voice, centering student voices, and then also focusing on how our curriculum and instructional practices and materials are culturally relevant to students. Data plays a key role here because data is what helps to inform our instruction. It leads to decisions that are made around curriculum and support. So to start, I wanted to highlight some student progress and growth from iReady in the areas of reading and math. So I'm just going to transition to that here. So these data highlights are really just some quick snapshots of things that stand out in the areas of reading and math for iReady student progress. It's focused on the data related to typical annual growth. And the way iReady defines that is the, they define it as the average growth annually for students in a particular grade level. So here, you'll see, and let me just explain as well too, students just completed the fall diagnostic back in October. And so the only comparative data that I have to share with you is where students finished the year last year. So our winter data and that was compared to last year's fall data. I do look forward to using this year's data and meeting with teachers and having more conversation about our fall to winter data when that time comes. The winter diagnostic, that opens on January 8th. So it'll be sometime in the winter where I'll be able to compile and have more conversation about what typical annual growth is looking like for this year. But based on the data that we do have, one highlight is that more than 59% of students in grades two through four made progress towards their typical growth measures for reading. In the area of math for second grade, this was a big highlight. 50% of students in second grade have made progress towards their typical growth measures for math. And this is data that teachers see and review and can talk about. We have conversation about it. It informs our decisions around AIS and supports. And it's really helpful to have these quick snapshots. This is also winter 23 data where 60% of kindergarten students placed on or above grade level in reading. Very proud data point. If you see also placement by domain, it breaks down how they performed in those subareas, phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary comprehension, literature, and informational text. And then also fourth grade, 100% of fourth grade students had already made progress towards their typical growth measures for reading. And again, this was winter data, just looking at the data that was pulled. This was around maybe January, February of last year compared to where they started the year off in the fall last year and where they were. Typically, a student would show this level of growth by the end of the school year. But at their winter mark, they were already making significant progress. I'm just going to get back to slide here where we left off. And kind of building off of the discussion around data and how it helps to inform decisions that are made around curriculum and supports our work around academic excellence. I really wanted to highlight in this next bullet, all the work that has been done and continues to be done related to IST and RTI. Leslie and Nadia have spent a lot of time working with teachers. They've been a great support in this area for administrators as well. They worked hard to streamline IST process. Recently, they spent half-days with teachers in grade level groups across the district to review the process and discuss tier-one data collection, tier-two interventions, as well as how and why and what forms are completed and when. This has really helped to inform conversations about what support looks like for students who are receiving AIS as well as supports in general for students across all classrooms and grade level before tier-two or three interventions are needed. So I think the feedback that I've gotten from teachers, they're super appreciative of this and it has even helped to reshape my thinking about data collection and my work and how I support teachers and kind of having conversation about students and looking at things somewhat differently when it comes to where they are, how they get there, what's the story behind these numbers, and how can we get them to where they need to be. A few other things just to highlight on this slide. I would not be able to talk about academic excellence and high-quality curriculum without talking about the diversity in the range of student offerings for clubs and activities that they get to participate in. Because we know from research that when students are engaged in extracurricular activities, that it directly relates to their success in the classroom. I was a student athlete. I mean, even in elementary school, outside of school, I was always involved in things. When I was in high school, I ran cross-country. I played basketball, college, division-two athlete. And I know firsthand that because of my connection to sports and the things that I was involved in in school, that I was even more motivated to do well in the classroom. And outside of those reasons, I think that there's a lot to say about the team aspect and the connection that students make outside of the classroom through these types of activities. Next, the last bullet references journey through J V F. And I really want to highlight the academic excellence piece here. This is just a slide that speaks to what I was sharing about academic success related to extracurriculars. And then the journey through J V F. This was a graphic that came out from conversation that I was having with parents who had questions about their students' curriculum, what they were learning, what they were going to do in first grade compared to what they were going to be doing in second grade. And so this is not unique to Forestale. This is work that is already done through the work that the teachers did with curriculum mapping. It aligns directly to Atlas. I literally just read over the Atlas for each grade level and pulled these things out to highlight and provide parents with like a quick version of like what they can expect their kid to be learning through pre-K to fifth grade. And so they can see like the vertical alignment as well as the progression of the different topics that are covered. And it can also help to have conversation at home between students and their parents. The next piece here is an extension of that document that I previously referenced. And I felt like it was important to include the field trips piece here as well as programs, trips, and activities. I chose to highlight that because parents can see the connection between the curriculum and field trips as well as have an idea of what in and around our community, students have the opportunity to experience. The Hudson Valley is like awesome for that. And even locally in Beacon, students get to experience the community in different ways than they do just in their home life. Just want to read what I preface this list with. And it just reads that field trips enhance the lessons being taught in a regular classroom. And in addition to this extension of learning, they serve as a means to address access inequities by providing students with experiences beyond the classroom and outside of school that they may not have access to otherwise. Some of these experiences are district-wide. I tried to mark them with a star. And they serve as a shared experience for all Beacon City's school kids. And others on this list are unique to our school community culture and our J V F teacher identified opportunities for curriculum extension. You guys are familiar with some of the things like third grade, we know Calico Ball is a big one. Fifth grade, we know Sharp. And this is work that's continuing to be addressed through the strategic plan as related to the signature experiences that kids will have across all grade levels. Next is the area of, excuse me, communication. And I wanted to start off by highlighting just our improvement in the area of multilingual communication via Blackboard because it is embedded into the Blackboard platform that all principals use to communicate and do robo messages. But in addition to that, and through our partnership with OU Boosie's, translation services are in place. They've been able to be utilized for C S C meetings, have a translator present, as well as we recently just had a team meeting and a translator was able to participate in that for a family. I know that a couple of teachers have reached out to have a translator there for parent-teacher conferences. So I think that it's really important to highlight this. Again, this is something that's not specific, not only at J V F, this is district-wide. And it's important because it's not just like, oh, this nice thing we do. Like it's a requirement for us to meet families' needs in this way. And it's important that the district saw value in having this in place and that we're utilizing it. Next, as related to communication, is the Student Morning News Show as well as the Falcon's Nest Podcast through our newspaper club. This is one example where student voice is really amplified. If you walk into Podcast Club on one afternoon where it's taking place, you'll walk into the library and it's robust and it's loud and the kids are talking. They're sharing ideas about an episode that they want to record, who they might want to interview. And they cover a range of topics from like sports to what's your favorite thing to do on the weekend is. And it's nice to see them even engage in healthy discourse where they may not be agreeing, but they're able to sit and talk about these things as fourth and fifth graders with having different opinions and do so in a healthy way. Sometimes it's hard for adults to do that. So it's really nice to see them interact with each other in that way. In addition to that, I wanted to just highlight the effort to, excuse me, increase parent portal usage and in turn hopefully increase the number of parents and families who are receiving our communications. I also added on there ongoing P T S O check-ins. This has been nice to bridge the gap between home and school, to maintain that connection with our parent community. I see one of our parent members here now at the P T S O and they have been great, just kind of always checking in, being a support to teachers, to myself, and it's been wonderful as it relates to the area of communication. All right. The final area that I wanted to cover is the area of sustainability. Students this year in our environmental club, this is also another example of student voice, they're not shy. They are speaking up. They're trying to raise awareness. You'll see a photo on there where they wrote me a letter recently after having one of their club meetings. And Jessie, our Buildings and Grounds Director, he and I will be going to their next club meeting to hear out their thoughts and ideas around the litter that they picked up around the school and how they would like us to take action. So I think that says a lot, just like huge to them to like have the idea to like write this letter and see what we can do about it. And they're really excited to continue to help address sustainability. In addition to the student groups and conversations that are happening there, there was school-wide education through an assembly that we recently held focused on energy conservation. All of the elementary schools did this assembly in partnership with Central Hudson and the National Theater for Children. They came in and provided an interactive performance for our grades K through two and three to five. It was fun. The students thought, loved it, especially the grades three through five because during the performance, they really kind of tied in some youth culture and they used some phrases and things that really resonated with the kids. I learned how to do, I think it's the gritty, I don't know, it's a popular dance right now. But somehow it came up in the energy assembly and it was fun. And most importantly, the students really had some great takeaways. They shared that they learned about how to measure energy, how energy is wasted, how we conserve energy, and what renewable resources are. Also, related to sustainability is a recent initiative that was presented to me by one of our parents. And this was through the Trash and Treasure Project through Rubicon, where you work as a school community during the end of October through November time to collect candy wrappers for an upcycle program. So right now, we have a box in our lobby. It's being filled with candy wrappers post-October 31st. It's students are, I think they're also finding a way though to like ask to have more candy so they can bring in wrappers. But the nice part about this is that the wrappers will be collected and sent off. Those are going to be upcycled and then sent back to the company. So this is a nice way to tie in the sustainability area. And it was an idea that a parent found out about. They shared with me and I worked with our student news crew as well as the Environmental Club to get the information out about it. And that was exciting. The other areas related to sustainability include programming that's in place, that's been in place for a while, our partnership with Land to Learn, Common Ground Farm. And then the things we're looking forward to for this coming spring, Earth Day cleanup. The past couple of years, Forestale has served as one of the city of Beacon cleanup sites. So we have a whole team that comes together, parents, students, teachers, clean together. Around that same time, we also have our Spring Fest, which is a fun event where we partner with local organizations that come out, Green Team, Stony Kill, Common Ground, Land to Learn, a few others. And they offer activities. We have a band that plays music and it's just a really fun event to come together around a common goal. And so we're looking forward to the rest of these things that are going to be happening in the spring. And if anyone's going to hold me to it, it's going to be those Environmental Club students. They're going to make sure that these things happen. But in all seriousness, this has been a great start to the school year and I'm excited about the rest of our year together and I look forward to sharing more with you. You're always welcome to visit Forestale. I would love to see and chat with you guys outside of these meetings. So please take me up on my offering, goodbye. These are just some pictures that I wanted to share. We have students engaged in a science experiment here. The students are loving our Science 21 curriculum. We have utilization of a reading nook in the classroom, our fire prevention assembly, first grade E L A work, our annual staff photo at the bottom. And I love this picture here at the bottom. This is second grade working collaboratively on their engineering unit. Because of weather, they weren't able to go to their trip for Walkway over the Hudson. So instead, the second grade teachers had a backup plan and they build bridges in the classroom. And they had a competition about who can build the strongest bridge and they presented it. And it was really cool to see students, despite not being able to go on the trip because of weather, like be in deep thought about the build, the bridge that they were building and sharing that. And then as a fun way to end the day, they got to make applesauce together. And I tasted it and it was really good. Thank you all for being on this journey with us.
Thank you.
And I hope you all have a great year as well.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for?
This was amazing. I had one question about how did, how did the experience of working with iReady change your, you said it changed your mind about data? So how?
Well, I was saying that in reference to the work that Leslie and Nadia are doing. That shifted just my thoughts around data and the importance of the work that teachers are doing right from the beginning at tier-one, collecting data, regardless of the decision you think you might make down the line for whether or not a student might need additional services. Where it started from the beginning to get to know our students and know the story behind a number. And for that reason, my conversation has shifted with teachers.
And is that because you felt like you didn't want a student reduced to a number? So you
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly.
You feel like, what does it give you now?
More insight. It gives me an opportunity to have deeper conversation too with the family, conversations that I feel are more meaningful. And I feel like I'm better able to support staff. Yeah, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Any other questions? This is very exciting.
Yeah.
I really feel like you have a true window into what's going on there and there seems like there's so much. And to hear about the data, it just feels like you have a, I feel like I have a very full picture. I'm wondering if we could be sent the iReady presentation as well?
Yeah, sure.
Just because I don't take that in very quickly, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Always nice to bring your fan club. So I'm going to officially open the meeting now. It's November 6, 2013, regular meeting of the Board of Education. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as. Thank you all, please. Here. Excuse. Excused. Excused.
Here.
Here.
Here, thank you. Matt, can you review the fire exits?
Exits are in the back of the L G I.
Thank you. Open to the public. Is there anyone that would like to make a, oh, shoot. So sorry. We did this to you last year also. Before we get to open to the public, I'm actually going to have Jen present her workshop. Before we get to open to the public, I'm actually going to have Jen present her workshop quickly and then you can go home.
Super quick.
So sorry.
That's okay. It's actually a very nice presentation.
You seemed to enjoy it. I was watching it.
I don't get to see that part for my own kids. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. I'm here this evening to notify you that we have completed the audit for the June 30, 2023 fiscal year. I have met with the district's audit committee. We've discussed the details of the financial statement at length, the findings and recommendations as well. Included in the big packet that you have, there are actually four separate reports. You have the report on the district's financial statement, the report on the internal controls over financial reporting, the report on the federal wards under the uniform guidance, and the report on the extra classroom activity funds. I am pleased to say we did issue unmodified opinions on each of those reports. We noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Related to the district's financial statement, the district is in stable condition. However, it is important that the district continue to be mindful of spending, monitoring spending closely and, you know, be diligent with planning for future budgets. With regard to the audit of the federal awards under the uniform guidance, the district is considered a low-risk audity, which means that a minimum of 20% of the federal awards expended during the year required to be audited. This year, we did audit the child nutrition cluster and the education stabilization funds for the major programs. That yielded us a coverage of about 60% of the total expenditures for the year. The education stabilization funds are a pretty large portion of the federal awards that you get for the year. And those are required by the federal government to be looked at. They're considered high risk. So just another layer of oversight. I know the business office is going through review right now with those grants, but they have multiple people looking at those. Any specific questions related to the audit should be directed to the district's audit committee or management. But I just want to thank Emery and the business office for their assistance throughout the the audit process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your help.
Have a good evening.
Okay. Back to open to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Hearing none. We've had both of our workshops. Do we have any comments from our student board members, student representatives?
Nothing. I just had one thing. I think in December, we're actually going on a trip with JV Force with kids for like with our calculus classes. So I think that's pretty cool too, that they're going on that initiative with us. So yeah.
What is the trip?
What exactly is the trip?
It's Sergeant, actually. But yeah. I think so, I think believe Meg Casin's involved in organizing that. I'm not totally sure. But it's to have, for the calculus students, it's to show us like the college environment and sort of during the college application process to see the campus and sort of see what we're working for during this sort of stressful period. And then for the fifth graders, so my, according to my calculus teacher, it's the earlier you introduce like elementary students to a college environment, the more likely they are to pursue that. So bringing in the fifth graders to see the campus is supposed to sort of encourage them and their journey. And I think we're doing some sort of scavenger hunt activity with them, but calculus students are doing derivatives.
We're doing math.
And fifth graders are doing fractions. So I think we sort of branch off at that point. Yeah, bit of a combined.
Oh, that's great, though.
Which can, which college?
Uh, DCC.
Oh, cool.
That's great.
I hope all the fifth graders get to have that experience.
Do you know if all fifth graders?
It sounds like it's just with Sergeant that Meg Casin's organizing it.
Yeah, as far as I've heard, it's just.
Okay. Maybe it's something we can expand on.
Can it spread?
Very cool.
That's so neat.
And you're all going on the same bus, like you're going together.
Yeah.
I mean, they'll just love that, I think.
According to the SLU, we're all going to get a little buddy and yeah.
Oh, nice.
There better be pictures.
I love it. That's so awesome. Anything else going on that you guys want to share?
There is a volleyball tournament Thursday, which if you guys want to take part, we're raising money in support of Ms. Thomaselli. And yeah, we already have a lot of teams.
How cool.
Part, you know, you still can.
I participate in basketball.
You do not want me on any team. I'm alive.
We can't do this in public anymore.
Thank you. Good to see you guys. Enjoy your day off tomorrow. Reviewing the agenda, there are not any additions or corrections. And can I have a motion to move to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual? And the board will return in about a half hour. Anthony, second. Second by Flora. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes five to zero. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to highlight tomorrow is Election Day and our schools are closed for students for that, but there'll be a lot of professional learning happening tomorrow. So all of our teachers and administrators will be here at the high school. And we have a really rich day focused on reaching ENL students, English as a new language students, students with IEPs, special education students. And we have some required trainings that we're doing. We're kind of sprinkling those throughout the year. And then we also have time for grade levels and departments to meet tomorrow. So it's like people are just engaged all day in different learning activities or collaborative work. And it's really exciting for us to have that time. And and so, so yeah, so I wanted to highlight that. And things are moving along with our strategic planning process. The larger group met a week ago today and will be doing some further work in small teams over the next couple of months to move things forward, to move things forward with that. And then just want to highlight our fall sports season is just about complete. We, the boys soccer team was advancing pretty far again into the playoffs and just want to give them a shout out. It's a super close game Saturday night. They played Byram Hills up in Hyde Park, lost in double overtime. But a great season. And when I say almost over, we have one student who's still competing, Henry Ranky, who's going to be found out over the weekend from sectionals. He's going to be running cross country at the state meet. And he did that last year, so good luck to him. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Board comments. Semra?
No comment.
Thank you. Kristin?
No comment.
Anthony?
No comment.
Flora? We had a meeting of the Dutchess County School Board Association and during that time, we talked about some of the highlights from the NISBA conference. Did anybody here go to the conference this year? I didn't go either. There was some talk about electric, a session on electric buses. And there was a recommendation, and you guys probably already know this, but I'll mention it anyway, a recommendation that came up about stacking the federal EPA grant on top of nicer to state grants, which I guess was news to some districts. So it was something I wanted to to mention. And we are having the first meeting of the DCSBA advocacy committee. I sent an email out about that to you guys today. It'll be Thursday, November 16th via Zoom. I'll share the Zoom link next week and I encourage you guys to attend. We're going to start talking about our advocacy goals for the year and how we want to coordinate efforts with all of the districts in Dutchess County. And that's it.
Do we have a pral meeting next week? We don't, right? Because we just had.
No, we don't.
And I do have that we have a policy meeting next week. Do we have a policy meeting next week?
Oh, wait. Or did we decide to have both and then skip December?
I thought we decided to have both.
I think you're right. I think you're right.
Okay, we do have both. Okay.
So yes.
So pral and policy next week.
Yeah.
Super. I don't have any comments. So moving on to new business, we have two items tonight. The first is to discuss RFPs that we received from for legal counsel. We received three proposals. And does anyone have any comments that they want to share about them? We we heard from Gervin last time, didn't we? Was Gervin one of the, okay. So two, two.
Did we say we did?
We did.
We did, yes. We we actually met with them when we, when we did this last. They're from Albany.
Okay, yes, 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 yes. That's what I was wondering about that theme.
And obviously, we know Thomas Drowhan.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we've been really well-served by Thomas Drowhan, Waxman and Pedigro. I am male. I was also very impressed by the letter that we received from Bond, Shonek and King. So I feel like to be faithful to the process, I think it would be good to take a similar approach to what we did last time and talk to the, talk to firms and have, and get their perspective on how this relationship could work.
I agree. I I definitely was interested in, I'd love to bring Thomas Drowhan in and just sort of, you know, talk about how it's been going with them. I was very interested in the letter we got from Bond. I'd be curious to meet with them. I was less, just because we met with Gervin and I can't remember. I'd have to look back at my notes and.
I don't remember them at all, but I.
Tara was their special ed lawyer. They had the partner Gerving was, did more of the contractual.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tara Moffett.
Okay.
Was the legal. I just was in special ed at that time, so I was asking her a bunch of questions.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I do remember that.
He can remember them, but not as well as, I feel like there's another firm that was quite far away that we didn't hear.
Harris, Harris Beach.
Harris Beach, yeah.
Harris Beach.
They were, I liked them too, but they didn't, they didn't try this time. But I remember them well. I remember the presentation from Drowhan and I remember Gerving a little bit less. But I'm curious about, yeah, like, I mean, if I were picking the ones that I'm most curious about having the discussion with, it would be Drowhan and Bond.
Bond. I tend to agree. Does anybody else have any?
That was my sense after reading the letters.
Okay. Anthony, do you have any thoughts you want to share?
I mean, I would like to, before we pull them in, maybe reach out to districts that they represent to see what they think of their representation. And then, you know, after we get that, see, I'm not opposed to bringing them in. You know, we could speak and we have intimate knowledge about Thomas Drowhan, Waxman and Pedigro. Right? Whereas if we reached out to districts or had the district clerk or someone reach out to see, you know, what they, what they feel is their strengths and so forth. That could give us more information than we could ask questions based on that part.
Okay. Did you do that last time? I'm trying, you were president then, so I'm just trying to remember if you did that yourself or.
I think we didn't because it was we knew we were going a different route than current.
Right.
And so we were going to meet, I think we met like three or four last time.
Yeah. I'm just, we did, yeah. I'm just trying, I'm wondering, would it be appropriate for me to reach out to the board president of the, of a couple districts? Or do you think it would be more appropriate to have the district clerk do it or?
I didn't see in the referral and I didn't read it with a fine-tooth comb, but like I didn't see the list or maybe I over.
They, one of them.
I saw the bios. I saw who the team was that they were gonna, that was gonna work with.
I mean, each proposal was a little bit different in terms of that.
I just don't remember seeing a list of districts that they represent.
Bond, Bond works locally with Poughkeepsie. And I, I worked with Bond as when I was deputy superintendent in Ithaca. So, and I know they're still with Ithaca.
They do have it, I'm sorry.
They do, yeah. I'm looking at it now. So.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to bringing them in and having a conversation.
Yeah. I mean, I think we should do both for sure.
I, I liked that part. And I, since we have new board members, I found that process very informative.
Yeah.
Talking to firms and getting their perspective. So it's not, it's not like in the sense of wasting their time. That's why I said the ones I genuinely was interested in hearing from. But it was, I mean, my memory from the last process was that I felt like I learned a lot about where we stood in terms of our policy book and things that we needed updated. And there was some reflection from the attorneys that were proposing about upcoming, like sort of a schedule of negotiations. At that time, I think we were out of contract with several bargaining units. So it was just helpful to have that counsel and understand. I mean, you know, when they're, when you're pitching, you're kind of giving your best thinking. So it was, I found it really helpful. So I'm, I'm less inclined to vet them ahead of time. I would like to just meet with them and then we can always, I mean, whenever that happens, talking to whatever districts they work with, I'm fine with that, that not being something that.
We can start scheduling them now and and I can reach out in the meantime. You know, we sort of can do it.
Yeah, I'm fine. And I'm fine if you wanted to wait until after we met them to reach out too.
Okay.
No, I think it's a really good idea.
Yeah.
I like, I mean.
So are we all three then or? Yeah?
I mean, yeah, I mean, may as well, I'm judging, my thing for Bond is purely off their letter. So maybe to give more of an opportunity for a fuller picture of the other firm.
Yeah.
And not to eliminate them, I'd be fine with that too.
I mean, given that we are, you know, Anthony, you and I are the only original board members from that process. So I think it would be good to to meet with three firms. So, okay. So Vicky, I'll reach out to you. We can work out all of that.
Okay.
And then next on our agenda is the condom availability program. I really just wanted to collect the questions tonight so that we made sure we had any, like anything that we needed to pass by legal or I think the, Anthony, it sounded like your question was about liability or?
Process. As to what was the district process be? I skipped over those long reports that were sent to us. I didn't read them with fidelity, but like the process that the district would set up. Is there a liability on the district? If something fails, would there be an educational component to receiving? Is there an age requirement? Are parents notified? I think that all goes to the process and stuff.
Yeah, because there is, I mean, there's, you were required to have an opt-out element to it. So definitely parents would be notified in order to take their initiative to opt out if they wanted to with the program.
Right. And could it, instead of being opt out, could it be opt in? And then I just worry about perceptions, but that's not a question or anything.
Perception of what?
Like is our students like, I had a conversation with my senior daughter about it. Like, what would your thoughts be if the school was handing condoms? I said, she goes, all right. Wouldn't faze her, but I was like, then I started asking questions. Do you feel that it's promoting sex? Do you feel that it, you know, it's educating sex? Do you feel this and 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 stuff? So I just worry about like, how will the students perceive if we started doing it? Is it suggested? Like, are they taking it as a suggestion? Hey, it's okay to have sex.
Right.
You know?
Sure.
So that's just my wonders as to it, but more about the process. And then, you know, there's other aspects, but it's not really about the process or questions.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think it's important how we do this for sure. It's a, you know, it's an important, it's an important thing that should be done thoughtfully and, and, you know, consider, consider what it means to students. My, I mean, my thought was the high school I went to had definitely had a teen pregnancy issue. It was a different time. But I, I know that that was a, that's a life changer, you know? It changed the course of these students' lives, whether or not they, you know, had the baby or or aborted the pregnancy. It changed their lives forever. And so that's why I feel like having this as an option. It's not a, I don't see it as promoting sex. I, and it's, and it's not going to prevent all teen pregnancies or all, you know, the, the program, the state ed program kind of focuses on HIV, doesn't really even mention teen pregnancy. For me, teen pregnancy is a, is a bigger, I mean, both, you know, really, I think are important to, to try to prevent it as many tiers as possible. And we have a, we have some sex education curriculum. Obviously, we teach that abstinence is the most surefire way to avoid these things. But I think not everyone follows. But I think not everyone follows that. And if there, if we can add another tier of safety there for students, I, I feel very strongly, and I believe in our administration, our district and us to be able to do that in a thoughtful way that doesn't seem like it's, it's promoting sex.
I would, yeah, I would, I would also add to that, like my experience growing up in a district in the South that was very conservative and sex was not discussed. And there was no sex education really, and it just, it wasn't a thing. And I think that the more that you can empower kids with information or understanding, like, that is a tool. And I think there is a huge difference between promoting sex or promoting knowledge or promoting empowering students to make safe choices. And, you know, that is something that I wish that I had had as a teenager. I think it would have probably been great for women in my school of my generation. And I think, looking back on teenage me, I would have been smart enough to understand that just because my school made condoms available, they were not telling me that's, they were not tacitly saying, go have sex. They were saying, they would, I would read that as make safe choices and you have, you have a right to make a safe choice, like, and you have a right to have access to information and have access to, to tools to, to ensure your safety, your personal safety. And I think that's, I mean, I think that, that's a great message. I think anything that we do as far as information is, if we provide, I mean, we have a drug and alcohol counselor. I certainly don't think that's promoting the idea of consuming drugs or alcohol. It's recognizing that these situations in our society presents these, you know, these, this context for kids. This is the world that they operate in. And how do we, you know, in the, the information that they get outside of those circumstances is what helps them navigate once they're in those circumstances. I think, I don't know, I don't think my high school distributed condoms, but I know for a fact because it was the height of the AIDS epidemic that they, there was a lesson on condoms. I don't know if they still do that in the school. Very specifically remember my, probably, she, you know, I'm her age now, like showing how to put a condom on using a banana. And everyone was seriously traumatized by it. Nobody was like, that looks great to me, but I will tell you after, and, you know, everyone was silly and uncomfortable and all this information was a lot. But I had so much gratitude for those experiences in my public high school when I got to my Catholic college. And I lived on a floor with a lot of women who had zero information and a school that was not providing contraception. And the pressure that was on everyone to have sex was not reduced. And I've, there in Cleveland Circle, there was a Planned Parenthood, which is right off, you know, campus at BC. And I felt like it was like the public school girls were like Sherpas for the Catholic school girls to be like, this is where you get information, this is the kind of information you need. And, you know, I feel like it was mostly about understanding and also outside the barriers to, you know, purchase, like, the idea that you have to go in and buy something, especially if you, A, don't have the money or B, don't have supportive, you know, parents, which is kind of why I think an opt-out is better than an opt-in. Because an opt-out, if you have no one really paying attention at home, they're not gonna, they're not gonna notice to do an opt-out. If you have people really paying attention, they're gonna notice to do an opt-out. That means they're already talking to you about these things. Like you had that daughter, that conversation with your daughter. But I know a lot of people don't have that conversation with their parents and daughters definitely don't get that conversation from their dad the majority of the time. I mean, there's a lot of data around that. So it's something that I feel like if we can lower the barrier and make, just like with drugs and alcohol, provide information and resources that allow people to, allow our students to navigate life-changing circumstances outside of the classroom and outside of the building with tools, information, strategies and, you know, then I think their, the goal is that they can be lifelong learners and then they have the opportunity to have their life, you know, in terms of drugs and alcohol and also have the most options possible, that would be in terms of STDs and pregnancy. But I would also love to know the data around like what's our rate of STDs? What's our rate of pregnancy? It's probably health department data for Duchess County at least, so we should find out. And what are the most common STDs and, I don't know.
I'm not a hundred percent opposed, I just have the questions as to like the education piece, the drug and alcohol counselor, right? That's an educational piece, someone educating someone on the risks and what can happen.
Yeah.
And the other part is then, is then the process and procedure, right?
Right.
Is as to who's gonna be handing out, who's going to be doing that educational piece? Is it just gonna be available and like, you know, that's, that's, that's my question.
Yeah. And the, the rubric is pretty thorough, but I did want to ask you, Matt, would, I mean, would it be, what would be a good order of things? I brought it to the board because the first thing on the list is that, that, you know, some indication that the board would, is in favor of moving forward with it. But, but, you know, one thing that came up last time, we were talking about this, is the amount of time it will take to develop this program. And would that be good to do that from a policy that the board has written? Or, you know, or would, yeah, I, I guess, for me, it does feel like that's the first step is for the board to create a policy and then for you guys to create a procedure around that policy, but.
Yeah, I think that would work. Because ultimately, this has to get approved by the state. And so the policy is one of the check boxes, but there's a bunch of others. Heather's been doing a lot of research into it. We would kind of take the team approach on this. It's not gonna happen overnight, for sure.
Yeah, I understand.
So as different questions pop up from board members or the public, like it gives us time to try to answer those.
Yeah.
You know? But I think, I think doing a policy also helps you kind of get through the theoretical part of something and think through some of that. I think there's also, like on the other end, dozens of logistical questions around this, like in terms of who, who we're adding this to and, you know, like who's managing all this and all that. But like that said, we're ready to start working on it.
Well, it also was brought to us by students, right? So they probably have a better sense of what they're facing.
Yeah.
So finding out maybe from that group, the conversation that precipitated this ask would be really helpful.
Well, a part of the process is about engaging in some stakeholder conversations, right?
I sent you guys this list, didn't I? Did I send it to everyone? If I didn't, I apologize.
No, I mean, I'm gonna not, I'm gonna, I can't claim.
I'll, I'll, I'll send it again right now.
It's been a month of Sundays, Meredith.
Coming to you right now. All right, well, I mean, I think I understand your questions and concerns, Anthony. And just in terms of like liability and things like that, I do feel like maybe that does depend a little bit on how well the policy is written and things like that. Like it's, it all sort of winds together. But why don't, why don't, I'm happy to reach out to our legal counsel about it and just talk it over with them and, and get back to you with that and we can, we can talk more about it.
But would, it would make sense for us to start working on developing some drafts?
For policy?
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't I just get the liability answer and then we'll.
Okay.
And, and then we'll go from there, I think.
Do we have, does our firm have any examples of districts that are doing this? Is there any template?
I'll ask them that, because I think that would give us a lot of information.
Yeah, because then it would almost give us a district to talk to and ask them what, like why, what they, what issues came up, like.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'll, I'll check in with them and get you guys some more. I just sent the, the list again.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board member would like to have pulled from the agenda?
Twelve oh two and twelve oh three.
Any others? Can I have a motion to approve twelve point oh one through sixteen point oh nine, less twelve point oh two and twelve point oh three?
So moved.
Second. Kristin, second by Flora. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes five to zero. Can I have a motion to, can I do them together?
Sure.
Can I have a motion to approve twelve point oh two and twelve point oh three?
So moved.
Second.
Flora, second by Kristin. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm in favor. It fails four to one. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, okay, second. Anthony was so moved, I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes five to zero.